I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Can we have a roll call, please, Michael Anne?
Mayor Segada.
Present.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
Thank you. Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming out this evening, fighting the weather. Good to see you all. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. We also have a notice of potential quorum. A quorum, the City Commission may attend a meeting with the New Mexico Main Street during their annual site visit on November 14th, 3 o'clock here at City Hall. The offices will be closed Monday, November 12th, in observance of Veterans Day. And now, Mayor Protim Schuster, we have the U-Rock Award.
We do indeed. And let me just read what was written on this man's, the application that was submitted by the person who put his name in. It says he, it's for John Valpado. "We're very proud to honor you this tonight." Says, "You helped start Crime Stoppers, and you're very active in the community. He is the type of citizen we need in this community. He wants our town to be the best it can be." He's just an all-around great person. And I have to agree.
Absolutely.
You are, we're honoring you tonight because of who you are and what you have done.
How come you?
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you. So, you get this nice little pin there, and then you can get a candy. It says you hold the rock.
I just want to thank whoever nominated me for this award, and to thank the commissioners, Michael Anne, Scott, and all of you guys are doing here. I don't think I've a lot more people in this town more deserving of this award, including all of you. But I'd also want to take this time to commend you guys on the job you're doing. If you weren't doing your job, a testimony to the work you're doing, that hall would be filled with people with clipboards and cameras and everything else. The fact that they're pleased with what you guys are doing shows why they're staying home and feeling comfortable and safe and secure in the job you guys are doing in making Raton a more secure, more inviting, more appealing place to live. I really enjoy driving down Main Street today and seeing some of the projects going on. I just feel so enthused and so excited about what you guys are doing in this town, and we want to thank you for it.
John, I'd like to thank you personally. And you know, you're my kid's granddad, so we want to thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I might also tell you, John, that you don't have to stay here and listen to the mundane stuff that's coming. I'd like to leave you kind. I haven't been out of the house today. It's my first day out, so I'm enjoying it, and I will. All right. We'll try and entertain you a little bit. Okay, at this time, we will take comments from the general public. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
All right, I have a report on the branding team. We met on October 10th at the center. We worked on plans and assignments for the launch party, which is going to coincide with the Festival of Lights on November 23rd. We will have a float in the light parade, and we'll have some giveaways with the new logo, along with some information about the brand identity process. And I'll be working on additional avenues for telling the story behind the process starting two weeks prior to the launch. We'll be working on a few things. Last week, we did receive the official 1.0 brand standard identity guide, and all the digital files are ready to go. This includes the logo with various color treatments, guidelines for using the logo, the color palette, and the typography guidelines and samples. If the billboard contract is approved tonight, then the branding team will meet on Friday to work with Leighton Moon and begin our billboard designs. Also, I do plan to officially present the branding process to the commission at a future meeting, and will request your support as brand ambassadors moving forward in our community. And that's all of the branding process for now. The senior senator board has not met this month, and next meeting will be November 20th at 10:00 AM in Simroon. The Beautification Coalition has been communicating by email. Jared Chatterley has been arranging for a benefit concert to raise money for next summer's flowers. That will be February 16th at the Schuler. The show will open with a local youth artist, followed by Michael Delala, I think is how you say it. He's a guitarist out of Denver. And then the headliner is Jackie Gibson, so it's going to be focused on acoustic, acoustic guitar, whatnot. There will also be a fundraiser of Classic Night at the Movies in April, probably showing a Disney classic, hoping to get a lot of people out. Next summer, they're looking at fewer variety of plants and purchasing just the ones that did best this summer. The ones that have, like, the yellow and pink and blue seem to really, I don't even know what kind they are, I'm not the gardener, but they did really, really well. So they're looking at really focusing in on those, because we had many varieties. The plant experts are also going to probably grow a few flowers in a local greenhouse and see about the feasibility of being able to grow our own. But to get them that big before even summer starts could be a challenge, so they're just going to check that out. The last report I have is the Lodger's Tax Board. I attended the meeting on October 17th at 3:30 here in City Hall. I presented the proposed line item adjustments for the promotional lodger's tax fund, which were approved by the lodger's tax board and will come before the commission tonight. They were very pleased to know that the one-time transfer of $20,000 had been made out of the non-promotional fund into the promotional fund already to kind of meet that vision that we're looking at. Moving forward, once a media management specialist is approved, the next step will be to craft a better lodger's tax fund, lodger's tax funding request packet, similar to what Gallup uses, which will support the new vision that we have for these funds. The main discussion at the meeting was about the Lamar billboard contract, which we'll be deliberating on tonight. I do know that with the adjustments in the contract based on the feedback from the lodger's tax board, I believe it now, the contract now reflects what they desire, and I was told that they would recommend moving forward as long as it had those specific adjustments. It was also reported at the meeting that the Master of the Mountain had 71 competitors, plus support crews and families that attended the race. They fed over 200 people at the pre-race meeting. The new location for the shotgun shoot was the Raton Trap Club. It went well, and the participants liked the new bike route. They didn't have to do any back road biking. It was all road biking, so they liked that. It was interesting to note that the largest race divisions were in the 40 and older age group, so that was pretty interesting. There's still a goal to reach 100 participants. The lodger's tax board suggested that Parks and Rec use promotional videos from previous years and market stronger to college crowds to boost our numbers going forward. Additionally, he reported on the Down and Dirty Mountain Bike Race, the Dad. There was, there were 24 riders, which is 240% more than last year, I guess. We had, we had to cancel it due to lack. Most of the riders came from New Mexico, other parts of New Mexico and Texas. They had little challenges along the bike route that everybody enjoyed, that everyone had to start with an egg on a spoon to get to the starting point, and that kind of spread everyone out as they got on the mountain bike trail and headed up towards Maloya. There were lots of fun events. There was a wet sand crawl. There was a paddle on an inner tube with like a ping-pong paddle, and they had to go get a ducky and bring it back. They had to land their backs with a bike inner tube and shoot a flip-flop into a hula hoop. So there were all kinds of fun challenges, and everyone complained about the puzzle. They had the puzzle at the top there at Ponderosa, where you're coming around, and they're at elevation, and they're tired, and their brains aren't working right, and they had to stop and do a puzzle, and they were just like, so it was entertaining, I guess. Everyone filled out a survey that came. Leslie Fernandez had surveys for everybody, and everyone was really positive and said they'd bring more friends next year. There was also a short repeat presentation from Connie Martinez regarding KRD-O advertising, but no action was taken. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jacamo.
Yeah. RPS board meeting met on September 26th, 2018. Financial and statistical information was presented by Jessica Zollis, office manager and bookkeeper, and was approved by the board. General Manager Sandy Chavez reported that the 2018-19 final budget was approved by the state in August. Mrs. Chavez reported that the mediation with, the mediation with the Wazzile unit took place in July, on July 27th, 2018, in Las Vegas, Nevada. The mediator proposed to offer, the mediator proposed an offer which was denied by RPS. The August 16th, 2018, on August 16th, 2018, a Texas federal judge dismissed Wazzile's attempt to stop arbitration procedures relating to RPS case. The judge added that RPS will wait for further instructions from the legal counsel regarding the next step towards arbitration. In absence of Assistant General Manager Dave Consino, Mrs. Chavez reported that Unit 4 ran on August 20th and 21st with Jeff Schoonover from Smith Power Products on site to ensure that the unit was functioning properly to pass the test, to pass the state's admission test. The technicians concluded that the testing was done around 1:00 PM on August 21st and advised RPS, the numbers look very similar and should pass the admission test by the state. And also, there was no library board meeting this month. Your report.
All righty, thank you. Commissioner Chavez.
Yes, I do. The Raton Water Board met on October 16th, a rather lengthy meeting. We discussed the following. Lake Maloya is approximately eight feet below the spillway, and we're continuing to try to operate the Simroon system. Problems with the amount of sediment that's caused by the post-fire sediment is causing a lot of problems. The water, the water department crews worked last Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday 12-hour shifts, attempting to alleviate that problem, and that's kudos to that crew and to Mr. Campbell, if you would. Discussed the consideration of the filter plant improvement bids. As the bids received were higher than the budget, and USDA and the lower bidder lowered the bid by $500,000, we're still, it's still under consideration. Discussed the heart brilliant well, water line project. It's almost ready to wrap up, and should be within the next week or so. Had another lengthy discussion on the waste water nutrient issue. Will continue to monitor the regulations. These regulations are almost impossible by anybody to meet at this time, and the current, till the current technology catches up. Mr. Campbell's on top of this at all times. We discussed and approved paying, the paying of one-half of the cost of the new asphalt remote unit, and it was budgeted, since the water department will use it for cut-ins and stuff they agreed to, and they budgeted half of the money, which is around $40,000. We then approved the final report for the finances, and that was it for that. The financial board advisory board met on October 18th, reviewed the budget and the third quarter financial reports to be presented to the commission this evening. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes, indeed, and I'm going to apologize to Jessica right now because I'm going to ask you to fill in the gaps on our New Mexico Northeast Educational Board meeting, which was the 24th of September, correct? And one of the fun things that's going on there is a, what's the name of that hunt that you guys have got going? Where it's a murder mystery.
Murder mystery.
A historical.
Hold on, let me pick that one up. Put me on the spot, maybe.
Sorry.
Time traveler.
Time traveler. That's right.
Yeah.
So it's a pretty fun, exciting event, and anybody can jump in and join in on that.
Right, you can pick up like packets to play at Old Wazzile at Enchanted Grounds, and there's five different businesses that have packets, and you can, there's posters, in fact, there's one here that tells you where to pick them up.
Right. And I spoke with Liz's teacher, who intends to bring a whole class, I think, so it sounds like a fun thing. Monday, October 1st was the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and they were planning their retreat, which occurred on the weekend of October 20th. We also have a new MOA, MOA, coming up with them. And we, Mayor Segada and myself and Mr. Berry met with the chamber, and I believe it was the 5th, wasn't it, October 5th?
Sounds correct.
To just discuss some of the things that, to iron out new prospects in the future of that MOA. I met on the 9th with Mr. Commissioner Chavez, and he did a good job on reporting on the water board. This afternoon was the Housing Authority Board, and they are in, coming up on repairs of roofs that still from, left over from that hailstorm in 2016. They're still working out some of those issues, and then as well, they, they accepted bids and actually voted on a bid to do remodeling on some of the bathrooms on some of the units. Not all units need that, but that was, that was their highlight. Oh, and they have, it's called React inspections that are, the HUD will come on a, sometime in the next month to six weeks, and just drop in and say we're going to inspect. They pick out a random number of units to inspect, so that will be coming up soon. And that's all I have.
All righty. For myself, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Quarterly Meeting, that was on the 5th and 6th. We went through the resolutions and that, that we are going to support and put high marks on. Some of the things coming up, we talked about, I talked about a couple of things last meeting just briefly, but some things to expect in the legislation this year. There probably will be a proposed legislation on adding tax back on food, so look for that, because the hold harmless is definitely not working. It was broken from the beginning. The other thing that they brought to our attention is still, is the, in September, the FCC put the limit of the charges, $270 to what you can charge groups like Verizon and them coming in and using your utility poles. They set a, put a set price on that. They have the right to use our right-of-way, come in and build structures and all that, and we can't really enter into our own negotiations. We're going to be set by a set cost on that. I look for several tax reform bills to come. Two of them that they said were probably definitely going to happen would, we'll look for a 10, at least a 10-cent increase in the gas tax, which is kind of long overdue. And along those lines, to increase the excise tax, which would also incorporate people with their electric cars, because right now they don't buy gas, so they're not getting taxed, but they're using our highways and roads. So they will look at something in that. And then, one thing that I handed out to you, this was Resolute 41, it comes from the city of Farmington, and it's in regards to the San Juan generation, generating station there, that P&amp;M help finance and that and operates. They are looking at completely shutting that down now. They want to go to renewable, P&amp;M wants to go to 50% renewable, 50% fossil by 2035. Some of the things that are going to happen into the San Juan, or that area, Farmington area, you know, of course, loss of jobs. If this does go through and they shut it down, it's, could be potentially $53 to $55 million a year out of the general fund. One of the things that's got them concerned, those two, they had some educational bonds that were valued over $40 million, and they were issued 20 years into the future, based on property taxes generated by the plant. If the plant's not there, how are they going to meet these bonds? So this is, was put high up on the list. I included also a handout for you guys to look at. Of course, it's kind of biased, but you know, it explains renewables and what's happened. California right now is big into renewables, but they're also paying on average about 60% more, higher rates than anyone else in the country. And P&amp;M is trying to sell, as part of their sell, well, rates will be lower, which history shows rates won't be lower, they will be higher. And that, so that's just some information for you guys to look at, but those are the big items that are going in. The other one that is, was put at high is, of course, allowing retired officers to come back into schools and work, and the security or SROs at the schools to allow them to do that. And part of that bill was also to make the carrying of a firearm on a skilled property a felony. Right now, it is just a misdemeanor. If you, or it's sitting at home, and you call in a bomb threat, that's, that's a felony. But carrying a gun onto the property right now is just a misdemeanor. They want to get that up to a felony. And that's all I have, so we can move on to the business part of the meeting. Item 7A, approval of the October 9th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes. In your packets, if you've had a time to look over them and check them out.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 9th, 2018 minutes.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Tongue's not working tonight. Item B, public hearing deliberate enact on loaf and jug transfer of ownership of dispenser liquor license with package sales for premises located at 1262 South Second Street. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, it is our understanding that the loaf and jug chain has gone from ownership of, um, who is the grocery chain?
Kroger.
Kroger.
King's.
To Mini Mart Inc., and so I think the, the basis of this application is to transfer that then to Mini Mart Inc. You see them listed on the application. I think we would not see any changes here in town, but I think it's a corporate change that we're seeing.
I have to tell on myself, I picked it up and flipped the page over, and I saw Calvary Baptist Church, and I thought, oh, interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd skipped a page. I thought the church was taking over the liquor store. You know? And then I just looked back, and there, there was the page, but it would have been an interesting service. Yeah, the packet's there, it looks like all the information. Is there any questions for Mr. Berry?
No, I'll move to approve. Transfer of loaf and jug ownership dispensary license sale for premises located at 1262 South Second Street.
I'll say. Got a motion and a second to approve the transfer of sales. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item C, deliberate enact on lodger's tax recommendation for approval of promotional fund budget adjustment proposal from the commission lodger's tax working group. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, in your packet, you have a memorandum submitted to the commission from Michael Anne Antonucci, our city clerk treasurer. She was also in attendance at the lodger's tax advisory board member, uh, meeting held on October 17th. Commissioner Chatterley had covered most of the information that you see in the memo. Previously, the commission had taken action on a one-time transfer of $20,000 from the non-promotional fund to the promotional fund, because we were fairly low in that contingency item there, so that transfer has previously been acted on to discuss at this meeting. Then in addition, we had talked some, or Commissioner Chatterley had discussed the billboard proposals, and that discussion had taken place. We'll talk about that and a little more information. But you do see on the second page there, a list of the promotional budget adjustments that is coming to the commission tonight. I'd say this is a result of the working groups, work, several of you had worked with several members of the lodger's tax advisory board about really developing more of a consistent plan on how to get the most impact for our promotional funds, and I think those recommendations then were taken back to the lodger's tax advisory board. You see some of those incorporated here, and you see quite a list of proposed adjustments that are coming back to the commission for your consideration. But I would tell you that there is actually a significant amount of work that went into these recommendations, and as far as Ms. Antonucci or Commissioner Chatterley, they, present at the meeting can answer any specific questions as to that discussion, but that's the basis for the proposal that you have in front of you, Mayor.
All righty. Is there any questions? I'd like to thank Commissioner Chatterley, her, myself, lodger's board members Lori Bunker and Jose Archuleta. We've sat down and grinded this out over a couple of meetings. I feel pretty good with it. I think it's something of a direction that we can start looking at how we spend our lodger's tax money and get a better bang for the buck, so. Commissioner Chatterley, do you have any additions?
Oh, it's essentially the same amount of money, except for the $20,000 adjustment. It's just organized a little differently, just to kind of show the vision promoting, trying to beef up some of our bigger events and grow those, and take a little bit out of print, a little bit out of billboards, and, and put it a little more digitally here and there, so, but still keeping some in every pot.
Well, you know, a few meetings ago, when we had the meeting with the, with the lodger's tax board, and we asked that we go in this direction, and I think it's the right step. That's all.
Yeah, I like the, you know, the proposal where we focus on three or four events that we can do good and really do them good, do them well, and go forward from there.
The commission approved lodger's tax recommendation for approval of the promotional fund budget adjustment proposal from the commission lodger's tax working group.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve the budget adjustment proposal. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item D, deliberate enact on billboard advertising contract between the city of Raton and Lamar Billboards. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, you have a contract from Lamar in regard to renewal of the billboards. Looking back at the budget adjustments that you just took action on, the working group, the lodger's tax advisory board, and the commission have discussed reducing the billboard expense, which you see in the current budget was a little north of $28,000. The contract that you have is in the amount of $16,860, and the primary change would be that we would focus on certain locations where we feel like we're getting that, that larger impact, and it would really be trying to get those impressions from the travelers on the Porch Plains Route, the 6487 route, whereas under the old Lamar contract, there were billboards that were in southern New Mexico or eastern New Mexico, and I think there's a significant change there. So that's the primary. There seems to be a little bit of a difference between the proposed budget of $12,000 and what wound up in the contract. I don't know if one of you can address that, but you see the proposal there in front of you.
Yes, so you'll also see in the contract under the special considerations, we do have a credit balance currently with Lamar of $5,505. So going into this contract, we would actually only be paying $11,355, which is in would actually only be paying $11,355, which is in line with the $12,000 budget that we have proposed to be adjusted. So, next year's contract certainly, we would have to revisit that if we want to be at the 16 or keep it closer to the 12. When we renewed this contract two years ago, we had an issue with the way the billing was set up, and we were actually being billed for the Lamar, or I'm sorry, the Amarillo, one of the Amarillo billboards twice.
Oh, wow.
And so, we had discovered that, and we've just been carrying that credit forth, just kind of pending the renegotiation of this contract. So, we can either just request a check or apply that credit balance to the new contract.
I think I'd be in favor of just applying the credit to the balance.
Right.
I think the lodgers tax board felt the same way, if we could find a contract.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Berry? Ms. Antonucci?
I do have one question, so is this eliminating that billboard that's in Las Vegas then?
That was the, that was just the feeling of the lodgers tax board, that one, that if people have left, from what I understand, the reasoning is if people have already left Vegas, they're going to stop here or they're not going to stop, like, it wouldn't increase their chances of stopping here. It's just, they either stopped in Vegas and had their stop, or they're going to stop in Raton because there's nothing in between that we're competing with, I guess you would say. So that was the reasoning. I liked that billboard, but with the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's the right side read and it's big and it stands out, yeah.
And are, how are we taking any feedback, just from like, asking visitors at the visitor's center, or are we getting, how are we knowing which ones are effective and which ones aren't?
Billboards are tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to have actual data on that, I mean, the feedback on the Vegas board was from two members of lodgers tax board, one of whom has billboards, multi-fold billboards, you know, so.
Right, right.
That's kind of their thought behind that.
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, it'd be great to keep more, but then how, how much, like you said, it's hard to tell how much you're getting from it.
Right.
And they have rough data on here of the impressions per week, I think it is. What is that? I've seen it on some of the data here. I just, I'm sorry.
It's right on the back, your total impressions on this one, $88,336.
She has it.
I was just going to offer something that we can consider whenever we move forward, making the billboard design as a branding team. We might be able to put something like, we use Explore Raton for everything, but maybe we change the billboards just to say, go Raton, and have that redirect so we can get a count. You know, we could use something specific for billboards, but they're going to be the hardest to track data.
Right.
That's a good idea.
But we could definitely try some different ways to do that.
Well, location number three is the one that I was contacted about, and they wanted to know, what the hell does that mean? That's what I was told.
Oh, the billboard the way it is.
It says, Raton heart Texans, and I said, that means Raton loves Texans. He said, well, it doesn't sing. And I said, well, I'm sorry, it's there.
Well, as soon as, we do have the vinyls included in this contract, one pre-vine replacement, which they lapped about a year, and we'll have the new brand on all the billboards, so they'll all have a new, fresh look.
Okay.
I would say, Commissioner, if they brought it up with you, it made an impression.
That's true, yeah.
That's true, yep.
Yeah.
Not at 10:30 at night.
Come on, man. Any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the City of Raton and Lamar.
One second. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract between the City of Raton and Lamar billboards. Is there any further discussion? Mike Lank, can we have a roll call vote on that one, please?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Docomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Carries, thank you. Item E, deliberate enact on deed of easement between the City of Raton and Amtrak. Item F is basically the same thing as well. Mr. Berry, would you like to discuss both of them or one at a time?
Mayor and Commission, I think we would talk about both of them. There are two separate documents here, and so we've listed those as separate action items for the commission to consider. However, they really work together, and so, going back to what we've talked about numerous times, we did receive a draft of, under item E, a deed of easement between the City of Raton and Amtrak, and then under F, we'll consider a Raton station lease agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak. And the deed of easement is a short document that, in very summarized terms, just says that if the City of Raton acquires ownership of the Raton train station from BNSF, if not is finalized, that you will make that station available to Amtrak for passenger rail purposes. That would be the short explanation of that. Then under item F, we talk about the specifics of the lease agreement, that's a much lengthier document that spells out specific terms, but we would really consider both of these together. Now, as I have told several commissioners in the past several days, we have worked on the transfer of the Raton's train station from BNSF, who is the owner of the train station, to the City of Raton, and we have anticipated this transfer for many years, going back to Raton's request with Atchison, Topeka and Santa Fe. So, it's actually been several decades that the City of Raton has talked about this, and have just not been able to complete that deal for one reason or another, but this is as close as we have got. So, if you remember, Amtrak had submitted, they had drafted up both of the documents, that they had submitted the deed of easement and the station lease agreement to us previously, and we had a lot of comments on those, more than 30 comments, and we had sent those back to Amtrak. There's been a number of phone calls, we've talked to different people in Amtrak, and I would say that we didn't get our way on everything in the comments, but Amtrak was very good about negotiating those, listening to our perspective on that, making revisions to both of these documents. I feel good about bringing these documents to the commission now, in the present form. I would recommend approval of both of the documents to you, and I would submit to the commission that you now have a difficult decision. We can, at this time, take the exit ramp and pass on the ownership of the Raton train station, or by agreeing here, we would proceed into that and commit to that ownership, and of course, there are long-term responsibilities that go with that ownership. But you remember that previously, the commission had approved the agreement, the revised agreements with BNSF. We have maintained that contact with BNSF, they're asking us regularly, where are you at in the process? They're ready to take action on their set of agreements. We have worked with Amtrak back and forth, we have the documents that you have in front of you, and it's a decision for the commission. I'll give you a recommendation, if you want ownership of the Raton's train station, that my recommendation would be, we would approve the documents as is, but whether you want ownership of the Raton train station is now up to you, I will remain neutral on that. There are pros and cons both ways, but basically, the reason that we've talked about this long term is we have about 16,000 people that get on or off the train in Raton, and while the Raton's train station, excuse me, is an iconic building in downtown Raton, it's just not a nice experience for travelers. The building is not accommodating travelers, we don't provide services that travelers are looking for, it's not a great experience and it doesn't reflect well on Raton. So the intent would be, we would really try to do a lot better for those people that are getting on and off the train. And of course, we've talked about Southwest Chief Service that came into question in 2018, it looks like it will be funded and continue for the next fiscal year, we would hope beyond that, but you know, that was the process there where that was threatened. So, that's also in the mix there as far as your decision. Mayor, I'll hold up there and answer any questions that you have, but I would say that this is probably as favorable of terms as we're going to get with Amtrak.
Alrighty, discussion?
I have. I read this about three times, I see why the lawyers get so much money now. But I had some concerns, which I've blocked out. One was the railroad insurance, which is cost prohibitive, and if we took over that, was taken out of one of the 30 things that Mr. Berry talked about. The other thing is that we have funds that are sitting, ready to help with our restoration of that. I would hate to see us lose them, because we have just till December, and if not, then the state will claw them back from us and we'd have to start again trying to get it. The other thing is at the meeting, you were there and Scott was there, and I think we were at the meeting with Amtrak, and when Amtrak was saying, we're quitting service to Raton, you can ride a bus from Kansas to Albuquerque, well, if you recall during that meeting, the senator from Colorado had stated that they're still in the making of making a rail line from Cheyenne, Wyoming to El Paso. Even if, when we do get it, if we agree on this tonight and take, that's something down the road, even if Amtrak was to pull out and not make this a regular stop, that would be something that I think we would lose. We also had indications from one person that, at one time, and Lindy and I talked about it, had indicated a supper train that would travel between Trinidad and Raton. So we do, I believe we do need this station, and I, for one, would like to see us pass this tonight. That's all I have.
Well, I believe that the majority of the community, or at least the majority of the people that, actually everyone who has spoken to me on this issue is in favor of it, so I believe the community is pretty much in favor of it and hoping that we will acquire this building as it will be a boost, I think, to our community, that we can control, you know, a better look to the community by controlling how, it's a very important historic building, so I think, I think it's a good thing for us to acquire.
So kudos to our city manager, because I think this is the third copy that I've read of this darn thing.
Right.
And each time, he's gone to bat and really worked on it, so, again, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I just would kind of echo your comments. Of course, you always have to consider, this is another building that the city's taking under its wing, it's another building that we're going to have to maintain, and that, but at the same time, I think the benefits of having this, and if we can get it to be functional, I think it outweighs the others.
Right.
It had a lot of potential under city ownership to have some really neat things done, so that's a good point.
Mayor Commission, if I could add one thing, in the process of putting this agreement together, we did have a meeting with an Amtrak representative who, specific to the Southwest chief, and I don't think this is necessarily a bad thing, and I think it's something that we could have anticipated, but they were cleaning out their portable building, they stated they have an intent to get rid of the portable building, they stated that they will not have a ticket agent in Raton any longer, so sales will be from a kiosk or online. They've had a seasonal Amtrak ticket agent in Raton in past years, only during the summertime and then not during the majority of the year, but from this point on, they will not have a ticket agent in Raton. And like I say, I think it's just a reflection of, you know, changes in the world.
Changing times.
And so I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, just pass that along.
Yeah, it's happening in airports as well, you don't have ticket agents per se anymore, it's all kiosks, tag your own bags, everything, I just went through all that this past week, so, joys.
I follow suit, in favor of acquiring.
Now, I would just also report that, you know, we have about rough dollars, about a quarter of a million dollars of money left over from our federal highway administration grants, there were two of those. We do have deadlines on those, I think we're in good shape to go forward, we anticipated a quarter.
Quarter.
A quarter.
Michael Anzer, woo-hoo, more money.
More money we thought.
I don't know where that's hiding.
We'll do some work, I think we'll do two things, we'll do some work that probably is indirect to the building, but would be parking and drainage improvements of what we talked about, because getting approval to work on the building will require a review of state historic preservation, and that's going to be challenging. So, with the deadline on the funds, we want something that we can get their approval on, and I think also we want to prepare a preliminary engineering report and just quantify what kind of improvements we would do on the building and what they might cost, and then we would have to pursue those funds, and we would anticipate, you know, that will take some time to find those funds, so we'll start that process.
Well, I will move to accept the deed of easement between the City of Raton and Amtrak. Did you want to put these together in one or two separate?
I think we would prefer two separate motions.
Two separate.
Yes, and Mary, yeah.
Hi, I see that, I was going to get the motion and the second, then we'll get the question.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to act, to accept the deed of easement between the City of Raton and Amtrak. Are there any further discussion? We have a question out here.
No, I, as an owner of a little shanty across the street, I highly endorse this action.
Alrighty, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, so now, is there any further discussion on this? We're acting on item E, the deed of easement between the City of Raton and Amtrak at this time. Okay, see you then. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now take motions on item F, the lease agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the lease agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak. Is there any further discussion? Mike Lank, can we have a roll call vote on that one, please?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jocke?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Scott, for all your work on this, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Commission.
Item G, deliberate enact on resolution 2018-59 authorizing the certification of the City of Raton's 2018 capital asset inventory.
Mayor Commission, I'm going to make a brief statement, but then yield it to our city clerk treasurer, Michael Ann Antonucci, but this is a large task, it's been very busy, Michael Ann has put a lot of additional effort into getting this certification to you here tonight, so I'll let her talk about the specifics of it, but again, a lot of extra effort going into this item.
Mayor Commission, as you can see in the resolution that we've prepared, we do use a firm that we contract, which is Records Consultant Inc., and we've been using them since 2013, and they're the company that originally prepared our complete inventory database that we use to track our capital assets. We also contract with them annually to perform the annual inventory, and they come in and the assets that are barcoded, they go around to the various departments and have a scanner, and they scan those items. And then we work with them also to enter any data for building improvements, street improvements, and those other types of improvements as well. They work here in April this year, the 17th through the 20th, and so what I've prepared for you is a summary, and you'll see in the memo that I've prepared, we currently have 1,673 inventory items in our database. In addition, we have 572 items that are land improvements and buildings, so it's a really large database that we maintain. So it's a really large database that we maintain. And then on the summary that's attached, you'll see the additions and disposals, and some of the items that fall under disposals may be just items that we've retired. We are kind of gathering some items that we'd like to have an auction possibly here in the near future. And a lot of those items are just stored at the Armex currently. So we're gonna be working on that as well. But I just kind of wanted to show you the summary of the inventory analysis that's broken out by item class. And then I've also given you some additional reports that provide a little bit more detail that tie back to that summary. And also a depreciation report, so that you can see all of these reports we prepare for the auditors. They will be here next week, and so this will be a major component of their visit next week is testing our capital asset inventory. It is required by NMAC 2.20.1.16 that we certify our capital asset inventory annually. So this is a requirement that I bring this to you for approval.
Yeah, are there any questions for Ms. Antemuchia?
Looks like a lot of work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll move to approve authorizing the certification of City of Raton 2018 capital assets inventory, resolution 2018-59.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-59.
Just one other comment. You're always available. I'm always available if you want to come in and look. We keep a book that I break out by department inventories, so pretty much all of the reports are on hand. And, you know, if you have questions and you want to sit down and look at any of it further, I do keep it in a binder.
Any other questions and discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item H, deliberate and act on resolution 2018-61 fiscal year 19 budget adjustment number three.
Question before we start. It's item, we just did item 59, and now we jump into 61. Michael Ann, is that a?
The reason is on the fixed asset resolution, it was postponed at two prior, two meetings because I didn't have the report ready for you. So we had already issued a number of 59, and so that's why that appears to be out of sequence. But it wasn't tabled, it was postponed.
Right.
If you recall.
Okay, thank you.
So, good question.
Okay, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, you see the resolution for our fiscal year budget adjustment number three, and as you remember, we typically would try to keep current on these on a monthly basis. And so it's, on the second page, you see specifically related to special revenue fund to afford lodger's tax promo fund. I think there are things that we've generally talked about, but I'm trying to answer any questions you have, or Michael Ann is available to answer this as well.
So these budget adjustments reflect the action that you took earlier this evening with regards to the promotional fund budget adjustments. This is just the formal action that we need to take to approve that so that I can send that on to Department of Finance for approval of the budget adjustment.
Any questions for Michael Ann or Scott?
I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-61 fiscal year 19 budget adjustment number three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2018-61. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on resolution 2018-62, resolution concerning the disposal of surplus property owned by the City of Raton. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, just as a general note, we tend to wind up with surplus property, whether it's vehicles that we no longer have a use for, equipment that's been replaced, or in this case, the dumpsters. And, you know, there's a little challenge in declaring those surplus and then going through with some form of disposal. In some cases, there's not a value to them, and it's a matter of just possibly going to scrap or something that way. But typically, there is some residual value that we would try to recover. So we tend to do these declarations of surplus property and disposal of those on an incident by incident basis, where maybe in past years, you know, we'd have one large action, but that's a little unwieldy. So we've been doing it this way, and I think we've had some success with that. In this case, we're talking about old dumpsters. It's part of our dumpster modernization where we replaced a lot of these. This is a pretty modest number. We're looking at declaring 150 dumpsters surplus property. We feel like there is some salvage value with these. It could range up to $150 per container, but I would say that realistically, we're looking at more like $100. But by taking an action of, on this resolution, we will take dumpsters out of the old dumpster storage area that are serviceable, that other entities have asked for, and we'll go through some kind of procurement with them and then come back to you with that. But we have a lot more than the 150 that are shown here. Some of those are not useful. There's not a value to those. We would probably look at directing those to scrap purpose, but these are some that would be useful. Somebody wants them, we'll try to work with that. So declaring 150 old dumpsters as surplus and allow us to dispose of those.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2018-62.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution number 2018-62, disposal of surplus property. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item G, deliberate and act on resolution 2018-63, first quarter financial report. Michael Ann.
Mayor, Commissioner, in your packet is our first quarter financial report for the period ending September 30th. You will see in our general fund financial summary that our available cash balance was As we've discussed previously, the first six months of the year, because we are operating mainly on gross receipts until we get property tax, we'll kind of start to see a decline in our cash flow. You will also see that for the second month in a row, that our gross receipts distribution that we received, this one reflecting August business activity, was lower than expected again, which was resulted only in a slight increase of 0.36% year-to-date. So we're only less than $10,000 above our budget projection year-to-date. So we've talked about this at previous meetings. Typically, we would be about 3% to 4% above our budget projection. We are still waiting for some of the GRT to come in from the construction projects that are kind of wrapping up right now. And we should see those probably in the December distribution, I would imagine. And then, of course, we'll receive property tax usually late December, early January. We've talked that if these lower-than-anticipated returns do continue during the winter months, then there would be a concern that we would not be able to make up the budget deficit during the fiscal year unless, of course, our small cities assistance distribution is higher than is budgeted. So that one's always difficult to forecast. But we are continuing toward closely with our department heads, and we're monitoring the budget and trying to minimize spending as much as possible. We are preparing to send out the business license renewal notices. We were actually working on those today. We're going to include a notice in there to the businesses of the new tax rate that will take effect January 1st. Our GRT rate will drop a quarter percent, and it'll be 8.2708%. So we will also coordinate with the radio and newspaper to do some additional public service announcements on that. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Michael?
Yeah, I'll move to approve resolution 2018-63 financial.
I'll second.
Report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-63, the September 30th financial reports. Is there any further discussion? I would just state that for two straight months to drop, that's kind of alarming, especially to the degree it is. And in visiting with other communities, hearing that they're not dropping, in fact, their last month was higher than previous, it just makes you wonder.
Mayor, I'll draft some, an inquiry to the state tax and rev in this regard. I wouldn't expect to get a, you know, real satisfaction out of that, but we'll try to make an inquiry to them. Now, some of the other, you know, indicators of business activity in Raton that we, that we look at, one would be the gas tax, and that's two cents of fuel that's sold here that comes to Raton. And it's been strong during that period. It's, it's been above budget, I would say, reflecting that summertime activity and, you know, our highway servicing type businesses, it looked like they were busy. Lodger's tax is another indication of that, also strong from what we've seen during the summer. And in looking at what limited data tax and rev does make available, it points to construction as being the place that we've fallen off, and I think we need to really evaluate that a lot closer. But we'll ask the question.
Alrighty, appreciate it.
I mean, shit, I think it's a mistake in their, in their disbursements, I really do, because places have been full.
Yeah. And there's a little history there, so. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item K, deliberate and act on letter of engagement from Modro Spurling for bond council services related to transfer station financing. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, remember some time ago, we had de feesed the remaining proceeds of the loan that we had arranged five years back with New Mexico Finance Authority. I had a meeting with the finance authority some weeks ago, and they really were not enthusiastic about looking at an application for the transfer station, again, due to that defeasance and the history on that. And so we're bringing an option to you for your consideration. We had talked to the firm, Modro Spurling, who had performed a similar service for us on the filter plant project specifically and arranging interim financing. You remember the action with Cobank, so this would be very similar. And just to kind of summarize the, the letter here that was submitted by Modro Spurling, and this is a reflection of my conversation with attorneys there, they proposed to provide bond council services to the City of Raton for the proposed financing of the solid waste transfer station and recycling center. The financing is expected to be placed with a local bank, and we would expect to pledge the environmental GRT increments for that debt service. I would anticipate that that amount is to be determined, but in the area of $600,000 and term of 10 years approximately. We'll work out the details of that and get it back to you. And they have proposed a fee of $15,000 plus gross receipts taxes and out-of-pocket costs for their services that are detailed in the letter here. So my recommendation to you is approval of the proposal for bond council services and retaining Modro Spurling at the cost of $15,000 plus gross receipts taxes and out-of-pocket This will be a process similar to what you saw with Cobank, where they will draft an ordinance. We will come back to the commission over several meetings. There's a period there of putting this together. Because USDA is not involved, it should be a little easier than the interim financing action, but still, I think we'll work on this for the rest of 2018 and try to get this together for early 2019. Of course, I anticipate a request for proposals for local banks to respond to that and express their interest here. So that will take place probably early in the year. Meanwhile, as far as the transfer station goes, we are going through the registration process with the New Mexico Environment Department. We still have a little work to do there. We still have some work to do as far as a package to request bids for construction, so we'll be working on that. And it should all come together about the same time. So I would anticipate construction in early 2019 and then likely a six-month construction period.
Alrighty. Any other questions for Mr. Berry?
Make a motion to approve letter of engagement for Modro Spurling for bond council services related to transfer station financing.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to accept, to approve the letter of engagement with the Modro Spurling firm. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Berry, city manager report, item L.
Mayor, Commissioner, as I was walking in the meeting, just previous to the meeting, I received an email from New Mexico State Aviation, and they said that the FAA was posting a new list of airports eligible for priority consideration. This would be eligibility under the supplemental, excuse me, airport improvement program that we talked about the last meeting where federal government had allocated a total of $1 billion for airport improvements. I checked that list before coming in. Raton is listed as an airport eligible for priority consideration. We do have our application in for the next round of funding. If we were not already in, the deadline would be October 31st. So we would anticipate that FAA will be looking at those applications for the next round, and they will take action on that. And I would assume that within the next month, two months, we will hear on the fiscal year 2019 awards. And we had applied for $1 million for rehabilitation of our apron and our windrows at the airport. The good thing about this application is it is 100% grant money. There is no match required of the state or the local sponsor. So should be in there. We'll work with them on that. We have plans ready to go. We've been working on environmental assessment of the project, so if we're awarded, and this is an important factor in consideration of this, our project should be ready to go to construction. So we have some optimism about getting some funding through that. And if we were not included in the 2019 round of action, that $1 billion would also fund a 2020. including the 2019 round of action, that $1 billion would also fund a 2020 round of projects, so I will check back with you on that. Mayor Commission, I'll give you just a brief discussion of our construction projects, construction is progressing on Hospital Drive reconstruction, also on our Great Blocks project on First Street, both projects are progressing well. I would anticipate by the time we get into our November meetings, we'll report that construction is wrapping up and we're closing those out. At that time, we'll be talking about our applications for capital outlay from the legislature, and of course, we want to have everything wrapped up when we go back to the legislature, but construction is going pretty well. We have scheduled a meeting for November 5th in Santa Fe in regard to the nutrient issue that Commissioner Chavez had reported on, we will meet with the Cabinet Secretary of the New Mexico Environment Department, his staff, and also municipal league in regard to the nutrient issue, and I'll report back to you on that. We did have an incident where a portion of the reinforced concrete bridge deck on Interstate 25 did fall onto Lincoln Avenue, this spans Lincoln Avenue. We closed Lincoln Avenue late last week, it remained closed through the weekend, it remains closed right now. We had contact with Department of Transportation, they have had their special bridge crew out to, to repair that late last week, they were back again Monday, they were working on it today, I will talk to them in the morning, and if they are reporting that the repairs are complete, we'll open up Lincoln Avenue. But we, we did not want to open it up while the repairs were going on, so we left it closed at the request of DOT, so I'll check with them, if they're done, we'll open up Lincoln Avenue. I did attend, along with Michael Ann Antinucci, a pre-proposal conference that was conducted yesterday for our business and economic development request for proposals. We had a number of potential proposers in attendance at the meeting, was held to answer any questions that they might have about the RFP. The RFP states that proposals are due on November 6th, we will then work on the review of those proposals, schedule that with the city commission, and we would try to look at some announcement or award by commission action before the end of the year. So certainly something we'll be talking about as we go forward, there's not a deadline on that, but we'll set that target date, so. I would just conclude with a statement that the RFP, the full proposal, is found on the city's website, so any interested party can go to the website, look at the request for proposals, it's a very broad opening there for any good idea that will bring economic development or creation of jobs to Raton, so we're asking any interested party to look at that and put their proposal together, we've got till November 6th. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Chatterley?
I'm on air.
Commissioner Jacom?
Not here.
Commissioner Chavez?
Of course. I, I just want to recommend, I mean, commend Michael Ann in the professional business. Last night at the candidate's forum, they handled it really well, and we appreciate you.
Good job. Mayor Pro Tim?
I'll just second that, that was a very good discussion last night.
We were very pleased with the turnout, so, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from people, I know the radio, Philly D did say that it may not have been too clear, I don't know if the feed was--
That was pretty good.
But I think we were just having some problems with our traveling mic, but I think it cleared up as--
Yeah, that was pretty good.
Other than that, I think we did good, and I think the candidates did a great job, too, that's difficult to be kind of put in the hot seat.
Absolutely, been there a couple times. I have no further comments, and business, none, we've done it all, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.